At the high sign.
High sign.
Good evening, welcome to the fifteenth meeting of the year. Today is October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Alyssa, can you please read the publication?
In compliance with chapter two thirty-one of Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty-five, posted on municipal building bulletin board, the borough website, and the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Roll call.
Mayor Gindy?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman DeSantis?
Here.
Councilman DeZemian?
Here.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Here.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yeah.
Council President Siula?
Here.
Please stand for a salute to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We have nothing for publications. Agenda session, there is six second readings. Andrea, if you could touch on them, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty twenty-five twenty-three is just handicap parking for Albert Street. Twenty twenty-five twenty-four is truck parking. It's increasing the fees for commercial parking on your streets. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five is a renewal provision of your mercantile licenses. I believe it's a two-year renewal. Twenty twenty-five twenty-six is the corresponding fees for the mercantile license renewal. Twenty twenty-five twenty-seven is property maintenance ordinance that prohibits parking on Blue Acres property. And twenty twenty-five twenty-eight is an amendment to your redevelopment committee. It adds a secretary, a non-voting secretary.
All right, thank you. Alyssa, can you please read twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-three, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
No, it's a public hearing.
No.
Public hearing first.
I'd like to open it up to the public first. First call, second call.
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
There you go, Jimmy.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Kraschinsky, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-four, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
DeZemian. I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Make a motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman Kraschinsky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas?
Second.
Seconded, uh, seconded by Councilman DeZemian. I got this right.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-five, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter two oh nine entitled License, Trades, and Occupations.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Councilman, uh, sorry, motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public? Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman DeZemian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas?
Second.
Second by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-six, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter one fifty-five of the Borough Code entitled Fees.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman Kraschinsky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opening it to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, by, second by, couns, seconded by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Krasch, uh, sorry, Giannakopoulos?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kraschinsky.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-seven, ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter two fifty-eight entitled Property Maintenance.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Motion by Council President Siula?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public, I'd like to open it to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, second by Councilman Kraschinsky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Councilman DeSantis, uh, sorry, DeZemian.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Alyssa, last one. Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight?
Ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend chapter twenty-two entitled Boards, Commissions, and Authorities.
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Siula, seconded by Councilman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to open it to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public?
Seconded by, sorry, motion by Council President Siula, seconded by Councilman Kraschinsky.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Council discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Councilman Kraschinsky, second by Councilman Giannakopoulos.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes.
Councilman DeZemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gortenski?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
I'd like to open the floor to the reports. CME, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. Brief update on the Capitol projects within South River. The twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four local aid projects, the work has been completed. Our office issued a punch list, and we're working with the DOT towards closeout. For the twenty twenty-three Local Transportation Project, the design is complete, and we are working with the DOT on trying to get authorization to bid. Twenty twenty-five Local Aid Program, this is for Prentice Avenue, Tice Avenue, and Cleveland Avenue. Our office is in the middle of design. Wouldn't have that completed within the month. The twenty twenty-five Electrical Substation Maintenance, the project is out for bid. NJDEP Stormwater Assistance Grant Program, our survey department is currently working on this year's portion. And for the next year's twenty twenty-six Local Aid Project, we submitted a grant for Mercer Street, Lion Street, and Mitchell Avenue. Thank you.
Council, do you have anything for CME? Joe, CFO?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Couple of resolutions on the agenda. The first one is a resolution approving the twenty-five Best Practice Inventory. This is required by the State of New Jersey. You need a score of thirty-two or better, and we got a score higher than thirty-two, so we'll get our final state aid payment in December. Next resolution is approving the Borough's Employee and Personnel Manual. This is done every few years. It's reviewed by our labor attorney, and it updates all the federal and state laws that have happened in the last couple of years. We also have a resolution approving additional funding received from the county for the Office on Aging Grants. And finally, a resolution transferring funds in the operating funds, which the law allows as of November first of twenty-five. That's it.
Council, anything for Joe? Joe? Thank you, Joe. Age, DPW?
We're on our second week of I-bus-portion, uh, three, next week, I-bus-portion. Also, Tuesday, November eleventh, we can close for Veterans Day. Veterans Day, there'll be nobody pick up that day. Public, that will be until, uh, Friday, November...
Thank you. Council, anything for Age? All right, thank you. First Assistant Chief?
We're up to four thirty-eight on alarms. Uh, we have one, we just have pit testing done for, left for the year, which will be done in the, um, other than everything else seems to be on alarm.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything for the chief? Andrea?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alyssa?
Just a reminder that Election Day is November fourth. Early voting starts October twenty-fifth and ends November second. The hours are Monday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM, and then Sunday, ten AM to six PM. The closest locations to South River are the East Brunswick Community Center, which is at seven twenty-one Cranberry Road, and the Sayerville Senior Center, which will be at four twenty-three Main Street. And also, just a reminder that if anyone has forgotten or doesn't know where they vote or what district they're in, they can always call the clerk's office, and we can let them know.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. Resolution three oh nine authorizing municipal consent agreement with NetSpeed. NetSpeed is a, um, a, um, alternative to Comcast Internet. This will, uh, agreement will allow them to put their wires on a pole. They will come to the next council meeting and make a short presentation. So now the residents will have a choice between Comcast and NetSpeed. And then on the Water Main Project, as you know, we're into the I-Bank. Their application is huge with a lot of components to it. So my latest report is they have completed seventy-five percent of our survey. Um, detailed plans are fifty percent, or sixty percent completed. Technical specifications are complete. Permit plans have been completed and are currently on the review. Environmental Assessment Plan is complete under internal technical review and planning to submit it next week.
That's very good to hear that. Thank you. Um, I'd like to open it to the public now.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
We have nothing to say.
I'm anxious to hear the council. Uh, Councilman Kraschinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, I don't have anything to report on the Office on Aging. It's later on in the month. Uh, all I can say is to check the Borough website at the beginning of the month, and if there's anything that you'd like to attend to, sign up early because they do fill up quick. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
First, I'd like to thank everybody that came out for South River Day, even though the weather didn't cooperate totally. We had a really good turnout. I want to thank Age and the DPW, and the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and Smokey the Bear, and the kids really seemed to enjoy it that day. The, the vendors did very well, and especially to Teresa, and Jim, and Stephanie, the three. If they weren't there, that place would not have been set up. So three of those people helped set pretty much that whole street up. So I thank them a lot. Uh, secondly, the Sentinel Athletic League and VFW Post Four, fourteen fifty-one is having a Halloween Community Bash on, uh, October twenty-sixth from twelve to three PM. They're gonna have family games, a trunk-or-treat, a costume contest, and food. They're also accepting donations for our food bank for any non-perishable items, so please bring them down this time of the year. The food bank is in great need of donations. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Councilman DeZemian?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, some updates to the project blog on the Borough's website were recently made. Uh, more updates to come on that in the next month. And good job to all who made South River Day a huge success. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, uh, I mentioned this at the last meeting regarding the turf field at the school. Um, I want to continue to get the word out that there's issues where children are misusing the turf with their bikes and their e-bikes. Uh, we're asking everybody and parents to instruct your children to stay off the turf with those bikes. It's just gonna ruin it. Um, and then it will be unplayable for the intended use, which is soccer, baseball, and softball for the school teams. The next Public Board of Ed meeting will be Monday, November seventeenth at seven PM in the high school auditorium. From the Recreation Advisory Board, uh, the department hosted the annual trunk-or-treat this past Saturday at Gorkowski Park. I was there with my family. It was very well attended by many of our residents. Uh, I want to thank the Recreation Department, especially Terry and Jessica. They went above and beyond to make it a very, very successful day, and also to the DPW for helping, uh, set up and clean up. The Pop Warner Football Season is coming to a close. Uh, our nine-U team will play in the championship game this Sunday, the twenty-sixth, versus Woodbridge at Woodbridge High School at ten AM. Uh, they're five and one on the season and hoping to win Central Jersey and advance to regionals. And the eleven-U team, which is the one that I help coach, we're awaiting our confirmed playoff schedule, but it would most likely be a championship game next Sunday, November second. Uh, the location and opponent is yet to be determined, so we won't have another meeting before that, but it will be the following Sunday. As far as winter sports, registration is now open for wrestling and basketball. Wrestling is for boys and girls ages four up through sixth grade, and we will start on November the twenty-fifth. I do coach that as well, so that's why I say "we." Um, basketball is for boys and girls in kindergarten through eighth grade. The goal is to have a girls-only division, but that will be dictated by registration numbers, and that season will start in January after the new year. Registration is also open for Adult Zumba, which is going to start in November, and is Mondays and Wednesdays from six PM to seven PM at fifty-five Reed Street. Uh, for any of those signups, you can visit the Borough website, www.southrivernj.org, click Departments, then Parks and Recreation, and you'll see a link to enroll. And if you have any issues online, you can call the office at seven three two, two five four, four four one two. And the next Recreation Advisory Board meeting will be Monday, November twenty-fourth at six thirty PM, fifty-five Reed Street. Residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Uh, yep. The, uh, next environmental and shade tree commission meeting is Thursday, November thirteenth, down at the Borough Office and, uh, on Washington Road. Um, and they're always looking for people to attend those meetings. If anyone is interested in anything like that, please attend that meeting. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman, Council President Siula?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, South River Day, the EDC was present there. They had a table, excuse me, with all the development going on in town and all the new stuff that's happening. Um, they spoke to a lot of the potential business owners and some of the business owners that are already in town, and are very interested in the retail stores on Main Street. So there was, it was a very positive day for everybody there, and a lot of compliments from the residents on the redevelopment of Main Street. They're very happy with the way it's looking and bringing it into the twenty-first century. Um, with that, Mayor, that's all I have right this minute.
Right, thank you. I'll hold my comments. I'd like to open it to the public. Five minutes. State your name and your address.
Evening. My name is Barry Brill, twenty Monticello Way, and it's about Collins Avenue. And to bring all you up to date, I had a meeting with the mayor, which I thank him very much for, about, we spent a good half hour talking about the problems in there. And he didn't like my first solution, so I came up with a second solution. I was in Pennsylvania a couple of weeks ago. I'm coming down this hill, and there was a traffic sign, a big flashing sign that said, "Slow down." It was forty-five miles an hour, went down to twenty. Then the Chinese, sign changed. It says, "You can't afford not to." Bingo. Bright eyes. You know, having a, uh, resolution, an edic, or a mandate to close, you know, it's not gonna work. Otherwise, the governor of Jersey would say, "Mandate everybody to be a safe driver, and we have no accidents, no deaths." So mandates didn't work at all. So my solution is, let's double down. Instead of giving one ticket out, why don't we give the two out? So on Monticello Drive, but no right-hand turn, no left-hand turn. Bingo. That's two tickets. Making an illegal turn on a one-way street, going the wrong way. The second thing is, I said, "Well, here's another one. You have a do-not-enter sign." Well, put another, that's on the left side. Put another one on the right side, and put a stop sign on both top of them. Stop, do not enter. Now, if you go through it, now you're running the stop sign. Now you can get three tickets out. And this is the best one of all. Put a speed limit on it. Zero miles an hour, going the wrong way. The one-hundred percent over, any speed that you do is over the amount. So I did a little thinking on that. That's one of the solutions to follow. I mean, uh, I'm serious about it. It's costing me a hundred and fifty dollars a year. I'm a senior citizen on fixed income. I mean, I can afford it, but some people can't. I mean, there's a lot of people. There's other people that, uh, drive it the right way, were driving it the right way, and they suffer for, like, ten percent of the bad drivers. That's the real problem. It's not the people that go in the wrong way. You gotta give them incentive to not do it. And what better way is to dig into their pocket? You give out, one ticket didn't work. So if you give out two tickets, that's six points on a driver's license. A low-bister insurance company, they'll have a lot to say about it. So it's gonna double up, and you know, if they're gonna talk about going the wrong way, it's gonna cost them two, three thousand dollars, they'll think twice about it. I mean, that's what makes the, give them incentive. Take their money, you know, and it's a way to solve the problem. Any questions?
Um, I, I have a comment, if I may. So what you're saying is like, so we have a cop sitting there, and they write a ticket to each of those individuals, and they ticket them. That's, that's the solution. So number, yeah, number one, I want to say, so there's, there's typically three cops on duty at a time in the town. So if you go on any of the other pages, they'll talk about speeding on Main Street, speeding on Cam Avenue, speeding on Leonard Dean, the new four-way stops. So if people want a cop at every corner and at every spot where there could be issues, that could be a possible solution. But that being said, you're saying you pay a hundred and fifty dollars a year to go around. So if we're gonna ticket somebody, how many tickets? Three, four, or five tickets, thousands of dollars. So the solution to save one resident one hundred and fifty is to ticket the others thousands. So at the end of the day, I don't feel like a solution to require police to sit at that, it's a, it's a very isolated corner of town. I don't see that as a solution.
I understand that. But you know, if you raise the bar, people, money talks. It talks very loud. When you take a whole bunch of money out of somebody's pocket, either they're gonna get religious on, uh, doing the safe thing, or avoid it and risk their driver's license, and the driver's license is they take it away for ninety days, what are they gonna do? Hey, I have to call an Uber to get to work or something like that, or go shopping? Makes people think a little bit. Make them think. That's what it does.
The accountability is on the driver, as you said, and I wish people held more accountability to themselves to not break the law. Unfortunately, the only enforcement would be a police officer. And to have somebody there is, it could be looked at a poor use of resources.
I understand that. I mean, uh, but it's also a hazard, it's also a hazard. I mean, for me, a safety hazard. I mean, if you have a police officer, and I have a heart attack, and I'm living on Monticello, and he's on Collins, where he could, uh, drive to my house in thirty seconds, now he has to go for a minute and a half.
All right, understand, understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you my comment on that after. Thank you. Anyone else from the public, please?
Good evening, everyone. Teresa Hutchison, thirty-eight Virginia Street, South River. In spite of me trying to hide the address of where South River Day was, everybody found it, and we had a great turnout. Also, despite the weather, had a great turnout, and I think it's fitting that I just mentioned some of the folks that made it happen. Apart from the Cultural Arts and Heritage Commission, which really put in a lot of time, made it work, we had other help. We had, um, the DPW cleaning it up for us and coming afterwards to take care of whatever was left over, the South River Police Department, South River Fire Department, who brought a Smokey the Bear, who was a big hit. Uh, I kept trying to raise his hat so I could see his eyes, but then I found it was attached to his head. So I stopped. Um, the Rec Department helped us. Uh, OEM helped us. Oh my gosh, TV thirty-five helped us, thank you. Uh, the website, Borough Website, helped us in promoting the event. Um, our council liaison, Councilwoman Donna Ballas, was there with us in the early hours, mapping out the streets and directing, uh, folks to where they should go. And, uh, all of the vendors and residents who came out, it was amazing. With the rain coming down, people came out. Um, the administration, Mr. Lindensky and Michelle, uh, his assistant, great help, always, not just South River Day, always. All the events we do, they are always with us, always helping us. I, I think they deserve a shout-out as well. Um, we're, we're planning next, next year's South River Day. We did it this year in October because in June it was a little hot and, you know, people were a little uncomfortable. So we're trying to, trying to decide, do we do it in October again, or September, back to June? We are asking the public to contact Cultural Arts. That's culturalarts@southrivernj.org. If you have a suggestion, a best time the whole South River Day, we'll listen to it, and, um, we'll vote on it. And again, just huge thanks to everybody for coming out. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Donato, thirty Daly Street in South River. Uh, just one, or you might say two items. Back in August eighteenth, we had two resolutions which were passed by the Council, uh, twenty twenty-five two sixty-nine and twenty twenty-five two seventy. They were, uh, two resolutions requesting that, uh, the, the Land Use Board investigate two properties to be re-designated as redevelopment. And my question is, um, well, actually, I have a few questions. Was that ever done by the?
Not completed.
Okay, so...
It'll be ready for the November meeting.
Okay, now what, what did the, my question, my guess, my, my specific question is, the Land Use Board got the request, and they did something. They reviewed it to find out whether it was, who was, who's gonna be doing that?
Right now, our planner is reviewing if it's adequate enough to be a redevelopment. Once it's reviewed, it will come to the council meeting first, which would be in a November meeting. Afterwards, it would go to the land use.
Okay, so they are doing that revaluation, not the, not the Land Use Board itself?
No, no, the planner is.
Okay.
Not the land use.
So it will be discussed, and
Yes.
the report will be available?
Correct.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is I took a look at the statutory regulations and the list of criteria. I already know what the answer is. I'm gonna be very interested to see what they say.
Okay.
Um, now, two of the, there's two major properties. One is between, on Virginia Street, near Alborn, and the other one is on Woji Way. Now, the one on Alborn, I know part of it, if not all of it, at one time was owned by the Borough. The Borough sold the property to a private, private, uh, property owner.
Quite a long, long time ago.
Who in turn sold it to a developer.
Actually, it got sold three times.
Yeah, mm, yeah. I, I found all the deeds. It's like, jeez, kinda. Uh, the one on Woji Way, the only thing I found was a deed into the Borough.
Yep.
Okay, so why are we designating Borough property, which I consider open space? Why are we, we're gonna redevelop that? We could use it.
It's potential.
We could use it for the rec center that everybody seemed to be so excited about.
Right.
Now, you gotta remember, that's natural, uh, it's in its natural condition. It has indigenous wildlife on it. And if we're gonna develop that thing to its fullest potential, we're gonna be throwing those, those, uh, out of there, which I think would be a sad shame. A rec center that would incorporate a lot of uses for the seniors, for the
I agree.
for the students. That would be the way to go, instead of trying to put it in Gorkowski Park, which is gonna be more difficult. It's a perfect spot for access, anything else you want. I, I don't think, I don't see anything wrong with it. So why are we still gonna pursue that? And maybe give it to, uh, give it to a developer to do what they want with it?
It's the potential of what it could be. It doesn't mean we're gonna commit to it. We're just looking to see what it's gonna do.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Okay, should be interesting to see what the report says. Like I said, I went through it. I'd like to see what their rationale is, um, and what they're gonna do. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Christian Alito, six Anderson Street. Um, I first off want to say, as a lifelong resident, finally seeing stuff going on on Main Street is, um, actually exciting. I first off wanna say, as a lifelong resident, finally seeing stuff going on on Main Street is, um, actually exciting. I think that the redevelopment is going to help out the town a lot. I think a couple of things I, I would think you guys should address is how this is going to be bringing in revenue for you guys through taxes. That's a big part of redevelopment. And I feel like that's something that this town desperately needs if we wanna continue to grow and actually reach our potential. So yeah, I, I just would like you guys to address that and, um, also taking into account that we should be pushing more for redevelopment if we actually wanna see this town grow. So, thank you guys.
Thank you. I will, I will talk about it in my report. I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. Sandra De Silva, 20 Robert Street. I know that we received a million dollar recently, a grant, to help with our water issues in town and everything like that. But recently, I've been seeing a lot of posts on Facebook and social media, people still having brown water issues. And some people have come, residents have come up to me too. I was just wondering if, um, possibly you could address why this is still happening and why people are still seeing water being brown?
Well, here, let me help you out. Right now, we're in a month of hydro flushing. Uh, prior to that, there was quite a few main breaks. Uh, there was quite a few service that was being done to our lines. And this is why I stirred up all the lines. So let me explain this in a better way. Your lines, right now, if there's no hydro flushing, there's no, um, uh, service interruptions, your water's gonna be running fine. You're gonna have pretty much as clear as clear. The water plant has been running perfect. Whenever you stir up the lines, you're loosening up everything and that's how you're getting brown water. I have a tint of brown water today. So I know it's gonna clear up in time. Unfortunately, um, they're in the middle of hydro flushing. You said end of this month? Two more weeks, all right? But I assured the whole entire town that when we ran originally, well, when I ran originally with my two candidates, we're replacing the line. So we're waiting for the plan to come in. Once the plan comes in, they're gonna go out to bid, see exactly who wins it. And then, once we do that, now we go through the financial issue of it and we're gonna be replacing all the water lines.
All right, is there a time expectancy? Like, how long would you think?
I'm hoping, hopefully at least a plan for next year at least.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Thank you for your time and I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? First call? Second call?
Motion to close public?
Second.
Motion by Council President Seola, second by Councilwoman Ballas.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Melissa, can you please read the consent resolutions, 2025 286 to 312?
Whereas Resolution 2025-01 authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it is hereby resolved that the below listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole as at the same or individually acted upon. Consent Resolutions 2025 286 to 2025 312. 286, authorizing the notice of request for proposals for 2026 professionals. 287, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of the school monies for October 2025. 288, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment to the custodian of school monies for November 2025. 289, approval of a special events permit to the Portuguese Club for an event to be held on October 26, 2025. 290, 2025 best practices. 291, approving South River Employee and Personnel Manual. 292, authorizing an electronic tax sale. 293, authorizing a tax sale notice fee. 294, purchase of police furniture by amending Resolution 2025-161. 295, awarding contract to Big Now Planning Consultants for Professional Services. 296, road opening permit refund. 297, resolution canceling federal and state grant receivables and appropriation reserve balances. 298, insertion of any special item of revenue in the budget. 299, appointments to the Office on Aging Department. 300, release of a performance bond for 17 Water Street. 301, transfer of year 2025 budget appropriations. 302, authorizing the 2025 Halloween curfew. 303, authorizing award of an emergency contract to High Energy Incorporated. 304, purchase of a police message board trailer. 305, accept August 18th, 2025 regular and executive session minutes. 306, accept September 22nd, 2025 regular and executive session minutes. 307, accept October 2nd, 2025 special and executive session minutes. 308, authorize certain utility refunds. 309, authorizing a municipal consent agreement with Net Speed LLC. 310, awarding a contract to JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated. 311, authorizing award of emergency contract to Prime Power Electrical Services Incorporated. 312, authorize the bills and claims list.
What is your motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilwoman Ballas.
Second.
Second by Council President Seola.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman De Santis?
Yes.
Councilman De Zemian?
Yes.
Councilman Giannakopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Grecchinsky?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes, with 312 abstaining from 25 dash 02299, 02614, 02881, 01921, 02566, 02458, 02462, and 02965.
All right, council comments? Uh, Council, Councilman Giannakopoulos?
I just wanna remind everyone that we have Halloween. It's, uh, falls on a Friday this year. The kids will be out walking around. And, uh, just to be careful, they're out there, you know, going trick or treating, doing what we do. And just keep an eye out and make sure that, you know, watch out. They got costumes, they might be dressed dark, whatever, running across the street, trying to get the next candy bar. So that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilman De Santis?
Yes, um, in the last few weeks, I've launched a Facebook page called River of Information. Uh, and the purpose and premise of the page is exactly as it sounds. It is informative. Basically, anyone that has any events or things that they need to put out there, they just put to approve and we'll post it. It is informative only. There's no comments or discussion. There are other pages that allow for opinions and back and forth, but this page is strictly informative. Um, I, along with another friend of mine, are the moderators. So anyone can join, they have to be approved. And your post would be approved unless it was controversial or, again, it's not based on opinion. This is to put events out there, not discussion and comments. So if anyone has anything to post, they can go ahead and find it on Facebook, River of Information, and we'd be glad to have your information out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman De Santis, uh, Councilman De Zemian?
St. Peter Paul Church will be, uh, having its annual full festival this Saturday at the church hall on Jeffrey Avenue from 10:00 AM till 4:00. Food, raffles, entertainment. Um, the next free concert of the Imperial Music Center will be on Sunday, November 2nd, at the Imperial Music Center at 2:00. Uh, the plan is to have TV 35 record it, so it'll be shown in the future on the website. And like, uh, was just mentioned, Halloween is around the corner. And watch out for the kids that night, trick or treating. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ballas?
Okay, we're gonna stick with Halloween, I guess. Uh, remember, there is a 9:00 PM curfew for anyone under the age of 16 during the period of October 30th to the 31st. So if you're out and about, if you're with your parents, you're all good. Be careful. Again, I, I, like they said with people with their Halloween costumes, also be careful again. We keep repeating ourselves every meeting. The kids on their motor scooters and their motorbikes on the way here, coming down George Street. Two kids on one bike. One kid a helmet, one kid not a helmet. Got right in front of the car. They were going faster than I was. Gotta be careful. Because you know what's gonna happen? The poor person that hits them.
Is gonna get in jail.
Not even that. They're not gonna be able to live with themselves. I, I don't understand it, but they're just, they're disregarding every traffic sign, stop sign, totally disregarding everything. So we, as drivers, even people on the sidewalk, walking, be careful. Just be aware of your circumstances and your surroundings. And by that, have a happy Halloween. Thank you.
Councilman Grecchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire, Robert Wood Johnson, especially our DPW for all the help that they do throughout the month on keeping us clean, safe, and what have you. Like everyone else has said, we have to watch. This is Safe Teen Drivers Week. Should be longer than that, too. Be obvious. Parents, talk to your kids about driving too fast on some of these local roads. We've got cars on both sides. You can't see someone step out in front of you. And we've had a number of fatalities throughout the years and they could be preventable. Same thing too, if you're on Main Street and you're going to one of the facilities in there. Look in that little round mirror and make sure that a tractor trailer isn't coming up there and is gonna take their door with you. Okay? With that, also look out for the children that are out trick or treating this weekend. The hydrant flushing, again, it'll end by the end of the month. So just be aware of it. Check the borough's schedule when your area is being flushed and run your water before you use it. Okay? With that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Seola?
Thank you. Uh, just to reiterate again, stay alert. Watch out for the kids, um, on the scooters, on the bikes. We had, the other day, I was walking up Johnson Place and hit on a electric bike, passed the car going up Johnson Place. So again, be very, very careful. Watch out for the kids trick or treating. Pay attention. Go extra slow on a lot of the, the side streets, just to make sure that they don't run out in front of you.
Thank you. All right, let's see if we can answer some of these questions. Uh, water, uh, obviously brown water, I already spoke to you about, uh, our, uh, issue that we're having with the water. Uh, like I said, we are resolving the problem by replacing the lines in time. You're gonna see it happen. Like I said, hopefully next year, we're gonna have the plans in play and we'll have the bids coming out. Colin Drive, my favorite. Thank you for coming to the meeting. I understand your concern. I see the smile on your face. I happen to have a report, by total coincidence, that we had a fire call at Monticello Way. Call came in on October 12th at approximately 12:50. At 12:50, the tones came in where we had a smoke condition at a house in a laundry room. So our first two SUVs, our Chief 2 and 3, both arrived within eight minutes of the call. Our first two trucks, both coming out of Station 1, right here on Jackson Street, arrived within nine minutes of the call. Engine 3, which is on Summit, arrived 20 minutes later. The point behind it is that regardless of where the call is, first responders will do everything possible to get there as soon as possible. I understand your concern. I understand why you want Colin Drive open. The problem with Colin Drive, and I know I have stressed this quite a few times, is that road was never supposed to be open. It was never supposed to be in play. For whatever reason, it was left open and the consequences are, people got used to it. And unfortunately, as much as your ideas sound easy and logical, I cannot tie up a police officer to sit there knowing that I have a town of 19,000 people, approximately three police officers are driving around. I, along with the President, uh, Administration, are trying to add more police officers. But even at 100 police officers, I cannot have a police officer just sitting there looking for, I got this. And you have to understand that, like I said, my concern is safety. And my safety comes down to kids playing in the road, um, people unaware of somebody coming up the wrong way unexpectedly. And you have to understand how I feel about it. Now, I happen to have one of my drivers right here that happened to be part of Ladder Tower. And that truck is massive. I have another firefighter sitting right there that, he belongs to Station 1. I mean, Tony, I mean, you got up there quick.
I'm chief engineer on the ladder tower. And.
Aye.
The alarm came in. I made it from my house to the station, to Monticello, in nine minutes. And the chief, you were there.
From the time the ladder and the engine left, because the engine left and the ladder was right there behind it simultaneously, they left together. From the time they left the station to the time it took them to get to Monticello Way was three minutes. My concern is not the department.
Police Department don't have any problems with that road being closed.
If they're on Collins Drive, they may have to get to Monticello. It's gonna be a little 90 seconds extra. Or they have to get the water.
Sir, sir. It's okay.
That is the safety part of it.
It's okay. I got it.
You're gonna trust that?
Thank you. Well, police have never had any issues with Colin Drive being closed. So I appreciate it. I hope to see you at the next council meeting. I'm sure I have another report for you. Hopefully, nothing on Monticello Way or any of that parts of the town. I wanna thank Parks and Rec, as well as Cultural Arts, South River Day, as well as their trunk or treat was a remarkable and awesome day, regardless of being a rainy day on Cultural Arts. Tracy, you did a great job. Jessica and Terry did a phenomenal job, so kudos to you two. Now, police, I know I, I read this on social media. I enjoy social media because everybody hides behind the keyboard. Matter of fact, over the weekend, I heard a nickname for it, called the Keyboard Warriors. That's what they do. They hide behind the keyboard. They'll complain about every possible thing, but yet they will not come to the council meeting. They will not stress their, or voice their opinion. They will not reach out to any of us. They will not email us. They will not call us. And it's sad because Mr. Barry is a perfect example. He comes here, he doesn't hide behind the keyboard. If there's loud music, there's people speeding, um, scooters going up and down your streets, call the cops. I don't care how many times you call the police, you call the police. If there's loud music during the day, even though there's an ordinance for 10 o'clock, you still call the police. Why? If you give them enough calls a day, they will show up. They are gonna show up. But remember, there's three police officers at any given one time driving around the whole town. So they're answering to so many other calls at the same time, but they have to answer to that call, regardless of what the circumstances are. That's what their job is. That's what your taxpayers pay for. So believe me when I tell you, and call the police. Next thing, and this is my favorite. I have to thank the whole entire administration for the last past year of how many parks, I was going through the numbers, how many parks we either rehabilitated, replaced equipment, or redone it totally. And that was Gherkowski Park, Daly's Field, and Voluntiers Park. Approximately $1.8 million was spent on it. Out of that money, one roughly, right about a million dollars were all in grants. It's a good job. You guys all did a great job. Administration, the, the professionals did a great job. I have to give it up to you. We keep on doing what is right when it comes down to the kids, or for that matter, replacing roads or looking out for the safety of, the well-being of our residents. Now, the next thing that I have to touch on is, and I, I have to go after this, is redevelopment. Perfect example is our building next door, which is the PNC, also known as the National, uh, National Bank. Building was built in the 18, late 1800s, 1890 to be exact, I believe. Now, yes, the word history sits in that building. Unfortunately, the word historical does not. I'll explain. And I had a very, very nice conversation with the New Jersey State Historical Society. And they went on to tell me that if a building is considered 50 years or older or 100% preserved, which that building was not preserved because it changed hands several times with banks, meaning the inside of the bank was redone multiple times. So it's not historical. The word history lies in the building 100%. But unfortunately, the Keyboard Warriors don't realize that the building did not belong to the borough of South River at all. We never owned it. Unfortunately, it was sold after Sandy, not only to one developer, but that one developer decided to sell it to another developer because he or she did not think it could be redone. The developer today, and this is fact, originally had that building already in play. Like, PNC was supposed to stay the way it was. I actually have the physical plans to it. Unfortunately, because of what the state required him to do, which was to fill in the basement, he could not do it because the engineers themselves said the building would not be structurally sound for what he wanted to build. So he had no other choice but to spend more money to take down a building that he had no intentions of doing. So he went back to the drawing board to read through the whole entire building based on what the state required him to do. Keep this in mind, once again, we didn't own the building. Regardless of what he wanted to do, he had every right since he owned the building to do whatever he wanted to do. Take it down, graffiti it, he could do anything he wants. We don't own the building. But I had the opportunity to sit with our South River Historical Society and they picked out quite a few things that they wanted to keep. So we did. For example, we kept the clock. The clock is still intact. We had it moved to the Department of We had it moved to the Department of Public Works for safekeeping, to make sure that nothing happens to it. And as you look at it now, if you actually walk by, you'll see what the big deal was. The big deal was that they have a basement, and the DEP unfortunately does not allow you to have a basement in your flood zone. Now, you're going to sit there and say, "Well, wait a minute, I'm kind of confused over the Bank of America. They're not taking it down." You're right. The Bank of America is not coming down. The reason it's not coming down is because they're not building on top of it, they're building on the side of it. But they also asked them to fill in the basement. So he, and this is why it's kind of stalled right now, is because they're trying to work out a negotiation where they could keep that basement in play. Until he figures it out, right now, you have two redevelopment going on, which is the PNC next door, which is going to be units and commercial, and you do have the Seabridge and the supermarket under, you know, renovations as we speak now. The pilings were already put in, which was 127, plus the footings, and now they're doing the foundation. So within, hopefully, a month or two, you're going to start seeing structure coming out of the supermarket. But that is the fact. And if for any reason, somebody wants to question it, you're more than welcome to come to a council meeting. You're more than welcome to reach out to any of the administration. You're more than welcome to call me, come to me. I will tell you how it is. I'm not here to hide behind it. Now, this is my favorite part. The best rumor I heard is, "Hey, we're not going to charge the PNC, since they're on a pilot program, we're not going to charge them a tax." I like to meet the cartoon character that actually thought that out, and I'm being honest. The reason I say this is because we're bringing in redevelopment for the concept of a tax revenue, and to bring life not only to Main Street, but to your connecting streets. So, for example, if you walk out this door right now, I guarantee a lot of things are closed. It's a ghost town. It's sad, but it's true. We're going to have it live. We're going to have it where it's going to be another Matouchen, a Westfield, a Romson, a Freehold. That's what you're going to have. Now, keep this also in the back of your mind, we're one of very few Main Streets in a local area. East Brunswick doesn't have it, Old Bridge doesn't have it, Cervil doesn't have it. New Brunswick is not so bad, but they're congested with kids, of course, Rutgers. And then you jump to Matouchen, you don't even have it in Edison. It's a fact. We have something that a lot of other towns don't have, and it's a ghost town. So with this administration, and for that matter, the future administration, we're looking to make it better. We're making it where you could walk up and down Main Street at 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night and enjoy yourself. This is your town. This is your Main Street. Now, let's talk about the pilot program. Today, the building's sitting right now, as we speak, we're only pulling in $5,000 in taxes a year, right now. PNC Bank, $5,000 a year, right now, not active, $5,000. Correct, Joe?
Local level.
Okay. For local level.
Right.
Okay? Now, with the pilot program, when the building is finally up and around, this is the estimated taxes that we're going to receive, rough, right around $135,000. Not bad. Good for you. You guys all did a great job. Land Use did a great job. Professionals did a great job, because we're bringing this to our town. And just think, this is one of three, and we're working on another three as we speak. Now, a lot of people say, "What is the council actually doing? What is the vision of this town?" The vision is that you will be able to walk up and down your streets and enjoy so many different types of stores. Your vision is that you're going to be able to walk out to a causeway that will be now a waterfront, and be able to enjoy the scenery, enjoy the waterfront, just like Amboy, just like South Amboy. Just think about that. You'll have a parking deck with more parking. That's the vision. And it keeps on going. Why? Because this is what we're hungry for. We're hungry for this town to finally be alive. We're hungry for people to move in this town and say they're enjoying this town.